I'd like to call the Gurnee Village Board Regular Meeting of September 28th, 2020, to order. Roll call please. Donna?
Bomas.
Present.
Hood.
Here.
Thorsonson.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
O'Brien.
Present.
All present.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening. First item on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by trustee Garner, second by trustee O'Brien. Roll call please. Bomas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Thorsonson.
Yes.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carries. Patrick, please read the consent agenda into the record.
Item number one, approval of the minutes from this September 14th, 2020 Village Board meeting. Item number two, approval of ordinance 2020-53 authorizing the approval of a contract with Christopher B. Burke Engineering, RDA, for professional engineering services. Item number three, approval of information to the division for representation through individual one-year Microsoft software assurance made to be an asset. The Dell marketing department and the community provides $26,000, $1,190,000 for seven cents to the Illinois Department of Innovation and Technology contract. Item number four, approval of local department representation through their formal bidding process in order to replace a three eighty unit or repair a one eighty system in a downtown town at a cost of $23,764. Item number five, approval of request for service to the market documents as authorized by the state of Illinois Local Markets Commission. Item number six, approval payroll for three days for bill of about $2,000,000, $851,652, $59,000. Item number seven, approval of bill for three days for $28,000,000 in about $340,000, $21,000, $59,000.
Thank you, Patrick. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by trustee Bomas, second by trustee Ross. Roll call please. Donna?
Bomas.
Aye.
Hood.
Yes.
Thorsonson.
Yes.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
All ayes.
All right. Motion carries. We'll move on to petitions and communications. The first is approval of a proclamation designating October 2020 as Crime Prevention Month in the Village of Gurnee. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by trustee O'Brien, second by trustee Garner. Roll call, are all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. It will be Crime Prevention Month. The next item is we are very proud and honored and to be able to honor some of our employees in the Police Department tonight. We're going to have a presentation of the Police Department Medal of Valor, Matorious Service Award, and unit citation related to action taken on July 3rd, 2020. And Chief Smith will be honoring the personnel. I have the microphone.
Governor, Mayor, Village Board, Mr. Muse, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come before you tonight. It is my honor to recognize a number of our employees referencing the incident that occurred over the summer in which unfortunately there was a fatality, but the victim in this case survived. And I just found out a few minutes before coming in that the young lady that was involved in this case with her child is here tonight. And so, having you here, thank you for being here, we appreciate it, and we're glad you're still here and your family's doing well.
Thank you.
So. We're going to do this a little bit differently than we normally would, and that's because we have a number of awards to read. And if we start with the unit citation that a group of officers will be receiving, it'll kind of give it away by the time we get to the highest award that we're going to issue tonight, and that is to Officer Dan Ruth. So, if Dan could come forward to this place, we appreciate it. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to read Dan's award cards, and then we have two other officers we're going to call forward for individual awards relating to heroism. And then we have a unit citation that will have a full story here. But this is the Medal of Valor that's issued to Officer Dan Ruth. It's for your acts of bravery and exceptional service in managing a shooting incident and rescuing the victim and her son on July 3rd, 2020. During the officers were dispatched to investigate a shooting in an apartment complex here in town, you responded and found the victim inside the locked patio door telling you that she had been shot and asking for help. Her toddler son was standing next to her. She told you the shooter was in the room and pointed towards the backs of the apartment. You believed an armed shooting suspect was inside the apartment, and yet you continued with your efforts. You forced open the door and started pulling her out while Officer Brannick covered you. When the toddler started to run away from and further into the apartment, you called for him and he responded back towards you. You reached into the apartment, picked him up, and safely removed him. You carried the child to the ambulance while you arranged the rescue station location. Officer Yensic was able to carry the victim to the nearby station location as well. You told Rescue they were in a hot zone and needed to leave the area as quickly as possible. You then positioned responding officers in optimal locations at the apartment complex, creating an inner perimeter. You also created two react teams with officers that responded to the threat by the suspect inside. You made sure the officers were equipped with helmets, shields, phone bags, and medical kits. You began the evacuation of other officers in the building and briefed Sergeant Hotman when he arrived. You continued to manage the inner perimeter with Sergeant Hotman until relieved by NITIS Mutual Aid Personnel. Because of your actions, the victim received prompt medical care for a critical injury and the threat to others was quickly contained. You are to be commended for your acts of bravery and professionalism. Congratulations. Again, it's my honor to present this award to you. Thank you for your service to the community. Thank you for your service to that family on that evening. We're proud to have you, and with this as a certificate and a medal for your responsibility. I just want to thank the support of my family, the support of all the police officers here, and more importantly, the support of all spouses who've given them a lot of applause. It's been a tough time for a long time. Thank you, Dan. Officer Tom Yensic. As you heard a little bit in the previous order, Tom was also very instrumental in this incident, and he's being awarded the Meritorious Service Award for your acts of bravery and exceptional service in handling the shooting incident and rescuing the victim and her son in July 2020. During the officers were dispatched to investigate a shooting in an apartment complex in town, you responded to the outside patio where Officer Ruth was holding the toddler and Officer Brannick was covering the inside of the apartment. The victim was lying half in the back door on the patio suffering from a gunshot wound. You believed an armed shooting suspect was inside the apartment and continued with your efforts. You approached the doorway, carried the victim out while Officer Brannick covered you, carrying her past the apartment door to the ambulance staging area at the front of the apartment complex. You identified the victim, confirmed the identity of the person who was shot, or shot her. You also confirmed that the suspect was still inside the apartment and shared that information with responding officers. You were then assigned to the inner perimeter covering the front door. You were joined by other officers forming a react team to deal with any possible threats created by the suspect. When the occupants in the apartment crossed the hall started coming out into the breezeway, you temporarily stood between them and the front door of the offending apartment, facing the door to shield their exit from the building with your body armor. You remained at your perimeter position until relieved by NITIS Personnel. Because of your actions, the victim received prompt medical care for a critical injury and the threat to others was quickly contained. You are hereby commended for your acts of bravery and professionalism. Congratulations.
I would just echo what Officer Ruth mentioned earlier. It really sort of wasn't a team effort. Obviously, there was a bunch of officers showing up to this, and we couldn't help it if we all feel like we're guys, do what we got to. So, it really wasn't a team effort. I just got to be there at that time, and I know anyone, you got to do the same thing. But thanks to all you guys, thanks to my wife and all the families that, like Officer Ruth said, took a long time to come on for us, and this is why we all do this job. Thank you, Chief and Agent, for believing in us that we can do all this and training us, and thanks to everyone. Thank you.
All right. As you've already heard a few times, Tom was also instrumental in this, and he's being issued a Meritorious Service Award for his acts of bravery and exceptional service in handling a shooting incident and rescuing the victim and her son on July 2020. During the officers were dispatched to investigate a shooting in an apartment complex in town, you responded with Officer Ruth, found the victim inside the locked patio door telling you that she had been shot and asking for help. Her toddler son was standing next to her. She told you the shooter was in the room and pointed towards the back of the living room. You believed an armed subject, shooting suspect was inside the apartment, and continued with your efforts. You covered Officer Ruth while he attempted to pull the victim out of the apartment. You continued to cover Officers Ruth and Yensic while they removed the victim and her son and carried them to safety. You then backed, you then backed up to a position of cover and continued to watch and cover the open patio door to keep the armed suspect contained in the apartment. You maintained that position alone until officers were assigned to assist you. When additional officers responded to your location, you began part of your react team and the inner perimeter at the back door until relieved by NITIS Personnel. Because of your actions, the victim received prompt medical care for a critical injury and the threat to others was quickly contained. You are to be commended for your acts of bravery and professionalism. Congratulations, Tom.
So, really, really quick, I just want to thank, obviously, my people, my community, my partners, my wife, our families, and most of all, nothing I can say, just a piece for seeing I survived here tonight. I've actually thought about it almost every day. We were there at the scene, but we don't almost know what happened today after. We can all wonder what we're going through. So, just sitting here is just like in my days, and you were the other one that survived. Thank you, Tom.
All right. As you can imagine, there were a number of Police Department personnel that were involved in this incident, from dispatchers, community service officers, to other police officers that were on the street that night, including a number of officers who were home off duty who responded in to assist. This is a unit citation, I'm going to read off a number of names. I know that some of you are here, some of you were unable to make it, and I want to take this opportunity to kind of tell the whole story about everybody's piece here. And so, this is issued to Sergeant Jeff Hotman, Detective Matt Penner, Brandon Goldber, Carol McLean, and Chad Tompkins, Officers Dan Ruth, Tom Brannick, Tom Yensic, Austin Dempsey, Rich Curtis, Rob Leets, Phil Mason, Dan Morehouse, JR Noceta, and Stan Sinclair, Community Service Officer Armando Martinez, and Communications Operators Megan Higman, Scott Evans, and Jordan Jones. This unit citation is given as a result of your efforts involving a shooting and the rescue of the victim and her toddler son in July 2020. During the officers were dispatched to investigate a shooting in an apartment complex in town, Communications Operator Evans received a call from an unknown male advising someone was shot and then hung up. From the caller's telephone number, Evans was able to determine an apartment and the location along with the names of several individuals associated with that apartment. Communications Operator Higman was working the Gurnee Police Test and began to dispatch officers and maintain constant radio traffic with the officers on the scene. Officers Ruth and Brannick were first to arrive. Officer Ruth located the victim lying next to her bed in the door inside the apartment. She told them she was shot and asked for help. The victim told offenders the shooter was in the room inside the apartment. Standing next to the victim was her gun toddler. Officers believed the shooter to be inside the apartment. Officers Ruth and Brannick forced entry through the door to rescue the victim and her child. The child started to run back into the main area of the apartment. Officer Ruth called to the toddler, and the child moved back toward him and his mother. Officer Ruth quickly grabbed him and removed the child from the apartment while Officer Brannick provided cover. Officer Yensic arrived and pulled the injured mother from the apartment. Communications Operator Jones performed dispatching for the road. She and Communications Operator Evans helped manage incoming calls, calling in and off duty officers, notifying NITIS and ILEAS, CARPLANS, and maintained constant radio communication with officers on the field. Officer Ruth called for burning fire to move up to the apartment building. Officer Yensic carried the victim to the front of the apartment building while Officer Ruth carried the child. Officer Brannick remained behind, maintaining watch and covering the open door, keeping the offender contained to that apartment. Officer Yensic learned from the victim who the offender was and confirmed that he was still inside the apartment. As burning fire arrived, they advised this was a load to go as they were in a hot zone by Officer Ruth. The victim and child were driven over the burning fire. Officer Dempsey arrived to assist Officer Brannick. Sergeant Hotman arrived and assumed command in the incident. He coordinated with Officer Ruth, who was working to position responding officers and establish the inner perimeter. Sergeant Hotman began helping Officer Ruth and Mason to clear neighboring apartments while requesting the assistance of outside agencies. Commander Vaughn responded from home for additional command assistance. An outer perimeter and staging area were established. Officers Morehouse, Sinclair, and Leets arrived on scene. Two react teams were set up and deployed to each of the apartment doors. Officer Yensic, who was familiar with the offender, agreed to try and contact him by phone to negotiate a surrender, but called with unanswered. While waiting for the arrival of NITIS at the staging area, Officer Mason was confronted by individuals involved in a domestic battery that had just occurred in another apartment building within the complex. Relatives of the victim arrived to confront the offender. The situation became violent, and Officer Mason was provided additional assistance as he began the investigation and eventually turned it over to Officer Noceta and ILEAS units for assistance. Detective Goldber and Officers Curtis and Noceta responded from home to assist with regular patrol. Detective Goldber was given command responsibilities for the road. Community Service Officer Martinez took custody of the rescued toddler and worked with the fire department and Detective Penner to place him in his hands custody. CSO Martinez also helped patrol by assisting with calls. NITIS arrived and their emergency service officers relieved current officers from their positions at the apartment doors. During detectives McLean and Tompkins obtained a search warrant for the apartment while Detective Penner went to the hospital to meet with the victim. NITIS tried to make telephone contact with the offender with no success. Officer Yensic provided NITIS with a detailed layout of the apartment. After deploying a robot and a drone inside the apartment, the common areas along with the bathroom were cleared. Two bedroom doors were closed. ESC deployed a drone, and unfortunately, the offender was found with self-inflicted gunshot wound inside the apartment. Each member of the department performed badly despite being confronted with a highly stressful situation. Thank you all for your service, and we're very proud of you. Donna? Brannick? Carol McLean? Chad Tompkins? Dan Ruth? Tom Brannick? Austin Dempsey? Rich Curtis? Rob Leets? Phil Mason? Dan Morehouse? JR Noceta? Stan Sinclair? Community Service Officer Armando Martinez? Communications Operator Megan Higman? Communications Operator Jordan Jones? And Communications Operator Scott Evans? Again, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Muse. Thank you, Board. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you and acknowledge the fine work that the officers do every day in our community, but especially in this incident where they responded to a life-to-death situation. They were able to react appropriately, hopefully save a life and a family, and again, just recognizing that you guys all serve with compassion on a daily basis, and we're very proud of you. Thank you for everything that you do. And again, to the families, thank you for all the support that you provided to all of the officers, and to everybody else, village staff. We're blessed here in Gurnee. We appreciate it every day, and thank you for everything that you do for us.
I just want to say thank you, Chief and Deputy Chief, for your leadership of the team. Thank you all. All of us are so incredibly proud of what you did that night and what you do every day. I know it's been tough, but you have our complete confidence, all our faith, and I can promise you, as long as we're sitting up here, we're committed to giving you a good leadership team and the resources and the equipment and the training that you need because we know you put your lives on the line. We want to make sure you feel empowered and trained and equipped to do that safely. So, we're doing what we can to support you. Thank you for what you do every day. I want to cry. I'm just so proud. All right. You've got a tough act to follow there. We're going to have a presentation from Arista on our updated comprehensive land use plan. We've entitled it Compass 2040. And this has been going on for a while, but Arista, I know you've had a lot of help from David and Tracy and staff, and this is kind of the culmination. So, the floor is all yours.
Okay. Great. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if it's on. Yes. I'm good? Okay. Yeah, even with a mask on, I still don't have an inside voice, so. So, thank you all for having me tonight to present the proposed updated comprehensive plan, Compass 2040. As you are aware, the comp plan is really laying out the policies and the vision for the future here in the Village of Gurnee over a 20-year planning horizon. As you can see, just as an introduction, it's organized over kind of five topic areas: land use, community character areas, economic development, environment, and open space, and mobility. It's really, and what this plan does, kind of the vision sums up where we want all these policies and strategies and actions that we've proposed to go forward as we move forward over the 20-year planning horizon. It is really looking at creating, making sure that the village stays a place that's a fun destination where people want to live of all different types of needs, whether it be, you know, elderly housing, young families. People have been here for a long time. We want to make sure that we keep that high quality and diverse housing stock, that we work within, creating a diverse economic environment here so you can have workers of every skill level and providing public services in a diverse workforce. And then again, looking at ways you get around the village, both from walking and biking to cars, transportation, and how that affects things like the economy such as offices and industrial work. So, when you look at the comp plan, the first part of it really just provides some background based on the data available basically up to right now, the time that we're in right now. So, it looks at a whole variety of different things and provides some data just as a foundational aspect, that being history, the regional context, things about the population profile, housing, kind of employment numbers, really just kind of giving you a baseline for kind of where we are right now as we look forward into this 20-year planning horizon. So, really, one of the first sections that we look at is the land use. That's kind of the core of most comprehensive plans. It's really the strategy for moving forward. How do things change? What patterns are preserved? And so, it really is the first and foremost thing that we look at. And what we're really looking at here is, you know, really creating the balance of land use. You've got that now. How do we preserve that moving forward and strengthen it and continue to kind of have a positive effect going forward? So, the first thing we did was an analysis really of what's on the ground through the GIS analysis, and as you can see here, the variety of maps that are in place here, the existing land use, the future land use, and the future land use areas of change. So, in existing land use, you see these categories. We've got three categories of residential, then plus multifamily, commercial and business, office and service, industrial and office research, and then public, quasi-public. And then public quasi-public, which looked at semi-public and semi-public land, parks and open space, and utility and railroad. And this is what you see here in the second map that takes a look at kind of where these areas are, the future land use. What we see moving forward into the future, you can see an increase in that industrial mixed use category to provide more economic flexibility. And then just for ease, showing the land use changes, what we've really mainly done is just changed some current neighborhood development patterns. We looked at what was on the ground and lined up the future land use with those neighborhood development patterns and some additional higher-density areas that you see here near the tri-state, within the ETJ. Some commercial areas that we've adjusted, Village Center and East Grand Gateway specifically pulled out because of their uniqueness and then adjusted that commercial type and then created, as I said, that industrial mixed use category. And so to make it easier for people to follow, what we've done is pulled out areas of change. So this is really just taking the future land use map and everything that stayed the same from existing was dropped out and this just shows you what areas have changed from existing to future. We should note moving forward that there was one parcel that we had missed that we believe should be commercial. It's a very small parcel at Stern School and Hunt Club Road. Am I correct? All right, okay. So that change, you'll see that in an updated map. It's a very small parcel up there in the corner that you'll see there that really should be commercial going into the future. And again, as we talked about, and you'll see this reflected in some of the economic development policies and some of the land use strategies, increasing, decreasing reliance mainly on retail and restaurant. You know, you have a lot here. How do we kind of support office and maybe industrial and new types of research and development categories? The inclusion of these office, industrial, and industrial mixed use, well, there's that large purple color, the darkest purple you see there, really provides a lot of opportunities to kind of bring up and support that type of business moving forward. So as I said, maintaining a balance of land uses, and this covers everything from residential, the different types of housing, the different types of neighborhoods that are in place, supporting the existing commercial base, attracting new industrial and new office. One of the things here, we know that there's been some interest in kind of senior housing within the village, so a recommendation of the plan moving forward is to assess the need for senior housing so that it's not all kind of put into Gurnee, that it's evenly distributed throughout the area. And then looking to plan growth where existing services and facilities are located. All right, one of the other things about land use, it's not just kind of these maps and the colors that are on them, it's also looking at, you know, what do we mean when new development comes? And one of the strategies of the plan is looking at a positive image of Gurnee as you come in because it's a great community. How do we show that physically, design standard-wise? So we looked at some issues, things like gateway features at major entry points, you know, even things like supporting the urban tree canopy. Trees make places look great. It's really continuing to support that aspect of it. Looking at ways that we can maybe tie the relationship between East and West Gurnee, have people be able to kind of connect those two together through different modes of multimodality. And even things like encouraging the bearing of utility lines. And what you see here, these big targets really are the gateway opportunity areas that we identified and some potential areas where that gateway aspect, gateway design could be enhanced in those areas as they're the main entry points to the village. As we looked at land use, there are some areas that need a little bit more specific focus or at least to be brought out in the plan and talked about more specifically. We've done two sub-area plans for potential future development, but then acknowledged two areas that are already in place. The first is the Village Center, and I don't know if you remember me from a long time ago coming to you guys on the memo. I know my hair was a different color back then, but it is me, I assure you. Reinforcing that existing character that's there. We had a whole discussion talking about kind of what's the future of the Village Center and it was kind of agreed what's there just needs to be reinforced, that a radical reimagination of Village Center was not the direction that we needed to go. And then in 2016, you did undertake a ULI study for East Grand Avenue, and so the idea is to pull those policies into here and some summary and recommendations from that were pulled into this comprehensive plan. And then we created two sub-area plans for Oak Lane and Belvedere and Milwaukee and Washington. And again, as sub-area plans, these are imaginings of what they could be. It's not zoning, it's not asking people to do exactly what's there, but it's giving some ideas and spurring some inspiration for if somebody were to come and redevelop those areas. This is the first here at Oak Lane and Belvedere, kind of as you're just coming off 94, I see it every time I come here, is really looking at that parcel and what can we make there? And so the idea is, what we started to say because of its proximity to Belvedere, that perhaps along the front, that we can put some commercial and then kind of slowly work our way back to commercial and office and mixed use and perhaps includes a multifamily. Finally, kind of culminating with single-family attached or less dense townhome development to kind of match up what's on that other side of that buffer. And so really, that was kind of the idea of how to work this sub-area, kind of create a gradation from commercial to residential in this area, providing a more diverse housing stock. You've got some multifamilies, some townhouses, you've really got a range that could be incorporated there. The third sub-area plan, which actually probably looks like three sub-area plans, but really we looked at it as one whole, was this area at Washington and Milwaukee and kind of how can we address this area that's there because they're all kind of, they're sort of, as you look at it, it kind of does look as one piece. So the first was kind of creating the commercial core area of the Washington and Milwaukee sub-area. And really here, what was imagined was a kind of commercial mixed use, even with some hotel included in there to kind of create this almost entertainment-type center, places people want to go, that's active, that's vital, kind of building off what's around it. So that was kind of the core area of that. The next was just because of the nature of where it's located, kind of the nature of the land that's located there was creating an industrial mixed use. And again, this is kind of that flex district that's possible, so it could be office, it could be R&amp;D, it could be industrial, but creating those series of options in a way to kind of use this parcel in a way that, again, does that economic diversity that's in place there. And the third one of this sub-area plan, which is probably the most logical, as you can see, we essentially just kind of copied the townhome multifamily development that's there, continued that pattern, kind of just kind of finishing up the loop that's located in that area. So the next kind of big portion of this is the economic development. So it's our next big section of the comprehensive plan. And we really want to make sure that we're supporting the existing businesses, but we're continuing to attract new types of developments, that things are balanced, that the proper variety is here to really create a positive economic development environment. So again, as I talked about a little already and I said I'd mention it, so here's where I mention it, the idea of office and industrial, it's that creation of that industrial mixed use, looking at taking advantage of your transportation opportunities, I-94, US-41, kind of protecting industrial and office areas from encroachment of commercial. So really, while we're allowing these mixed areas, we're not really actively bringing in too much commercial to kind of reduce the land available for that and continuing to actively market the village. The other aspect is to market the vacant properties. We've put in some strategies there that the village can consider regarding how we can advertise these areas to kind of throughout the region, maybe throughout the country, advertising the larger sites and working with the property owners to help them learn how to manage that. So it lays out some approaches that can be taken, you know, as a comp plan is really laying out policies and strategies, this would be the next step kind of following the comprehensive plan. One of the things here, which is always important, is the truck route, you know? This is how things get through and you've got a variety of businesses that do depend on that. Really continuing to work with Lake County to coordinate with IDOT, make sure that those truck routes are in place, that they're maintained, and that any gaps in service that we may see, that perhaps that's something to kind of keep working on and building on so that you can designate new routes when they're needed. Less reliance on retail and more on professional employment, I've kind of talked about this a bunch, but it's the idea of spurring more industrial and office development. One of the things here, while I know it's a little bit more difficult to get any kind of train access going through just because of how the rail lines are, but continuing to look at options for public transit, which is usually attractive to office workers and those kinds of employment areas. And then supporting the regional attractions. I mean, you are known for Gurnee Mills and Six Flags and Great Wolf Lodge and hopefully soon we'll be getting back to normal and operating those. I know I usually do a lot of roller coasters during the summer and I've done none this year, so it's really hoping we get back to that next year and continuing to really support these kind of large regional attractions that you have that make this village very unique in that sense. The environment and the open space, we want to promote and protect the network of open space that's here and continue to enhance that as we move forward. So a number of different strategies and policies and objectives laid out here, maintain and enhance the existing park and recreation areas. So these are things such as protecting existing resources from encroachment to taking active things to preserve certain areas for open space and in particular, looking at perhaps things such as development standards that require incorporation or protection of areas of natural resources and open space within development processes moving forward. And again, and you'll see this kind of through the end of this presentation pop up quite a bit, the idea of pedestrian and bicycle connections to these open space areas, connecting these parks, connecting the neighborhoods to these areas. We know flooding's an issue. Flooding's an issue in a number of communities we work with, so it's really looking at the delineation of wetlands and floodplains. Again, as we talk about development processes moving forwards, one of the proposed strategies that could be implemented is that it becomes part of the development approval process to identify these. Really looking at stormwater management at both a site level and village-wide and any land that's subject to repetitive loss, the suggestion within the plan has been to look for ways to maybe acquire that land. So the mobility is really kind of how we get around the village and it links all of these different aspects as well. So it's really looking to create a multimodal transportation network and reducing the negative aspects on livability and the environment by not giving people options of how they want to get to certain, to different places. One of the first things we suggested was the idea of adopting a complete streets policy, which is really talking about how everybody can get around the village, whether walking, biking, you know, driving, however you need to get around. The complete streets looks at the whole package so that everybody is comfortable on these roadways and on these transportation linkages. Acquiring land for sidewalks and bike paths, safe crossings, because one of the things is once you have the bike paths, sometimes you've got to get across the street, make sure that that can happen safely, including these when you're doing roadway improvements. And even in particular, certain things like streetscapes and urban tree canopies can make the pedestrian environment much more comfortable for people as they're walking through the village. Again, the pedestrian and bicycle trail master plan, kind of looking at the policies that have been brought up within that and integrating them as we move forward. The comprehensive plan speaks to policies that, you know, want to connect to regional trails. We want to focus bike and pet on some of the major roadways that are here. You see them listed, Grand, Washington, Allman, Milwaukee Avenue, Hunt Club Road, Dilly's Road, Gage's Lake. Those have been areas where we should focus on kind of creating those bicycle and pedestrian connections and infrastructure. And then again, like I said, linkages to schools, to parks, so that everybody, including schoolkids, can kind of get around. And then finally, public transit, and this is really looking at coordinating. We know that there are options with Metro and Amtrak that are kind of hard to surmount, but the idea is never to kind of let that go, that there is, if we can find a way, if at some point in the future, it's a possibility to really continue to kind of make sure that we keep an eye on that, knowing that PACE is here, looking at their service, identifying PACE service gaps and maybe how that can be improved moving forward. And so with that, it's a lot of information, there's a lot more within the plan, but I really just kind of wanted to give the larger overview of these different policies, objectives, and strategies that we've laid out. Thank you.
Excellent presentation. Excellent and well-written too, and I know hours and hours and hours and hours and hours went into this, even though it's, you know, only a 15-minute presentation. Very good work. I like the way it's laid out.
Oh, thank you.
High group things and I was telling Pat and Brian earlier, this is almost bittersweet tonight. I was appointed to the Plan Commission in 1997. My first meeting was to vote on that comprehensive land plan. I was like a deer in the headlights. I did read it before the meeting.
Right.
I don't know if Tracy remembers that, but I can tell you for the last 20 years, a little more, you know, it's been my bible. I mean, I refer to it, I've referred to it many times to either support something or to use it as ammunition against something, but these plans really do help us stay focused and on track and get things done. So hopefully everybody took time to read through it. Questions for Arista or for Steph? Trustee Rush?
I have a couple. So can you explain again, why bring in office and industrial? So we're less reliant on retail and entertainment since we don't have a property tax, then office doesn't help our tax base? And also, at this time, so many people are relearning how to work from home. I don't know that we're going to need that much office.
Yeah, I mean, that is the one question we don't really have the answer to, you know, and in my line of work, we've been since March dealing with it, what is the impact of this pandemic going to be on things like office? We know that it's got, it's been having some bad impact on retail and obviously on entertainment as well, so you know, we really, it's just too early to kind of tell where that will be. So it's something we're keeping in mind, but it's really something that we can't predict at this point. The intent of the plan, and I apologize if I gave the wrong impression, is not to de-emphasize or not support retail and entertainment and encourage new retail and entertainment. We have, we've looked at areas that we've designated as commercial. The idea was is to kind of just diversify a little bit to bring up that office, industrial, mixed use component. What we've seen elsewhere is that you're not really having too much straight office anymore. You're really getting that industrial mixed use, which is why we created that category and kind of put larger chunks of land into that category so that it's got a range of uses that it can be used for and there's a lot more flexibility. But it's not meant to de-emphasize. Quite frankly, we really wanted to build up the entertainment category, really pull that out because you have those regional attractions that are very unique. You've got three of them, I mean. And so continuing to support those and then additional commercial was added as well. So it's not like we're de-emphasizing.
And then this, this one is probably more a question for David, but a long time ago, we checked on burying the overhead power lines and discovered it was going to be way too expensive, right? And so why would we have that in here when we already know we can't afford it?
It's still an emphasis when we have large-scale development projects. If there's an opportunity to bury the lines, we will do those. The trick is that, you know, once they do get buried, if they ever become in conflict with something else, road widening or something like that, they pop back out of the ground. So ComEd always replaces them or relocates them with the least-cost alternative, which is always the above ground. So it's a, we look for opportunities where we can get them and we'll, you know, get them buried where we can and where it makes the most sense.
And just to say, we use the word encourage in the comp plan, so it's not a requirement when we actually speak of it, it's encouraged that when it's feasible. Understanding those issues that David spoke of are common everywhere, really.
Yeah, I agree with you on the office thing. So I think everything was tried to be as fungible, flexible as possible because you really don't know what the next 20 years are going to look like.
It just seems like it was similar to a lot of it.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, well, we know retail's going to shrink their footprint, so we don't want to expand that too much. And the retailers that we have need people in town besides those that live here, so but again, it's kind of a guiding principle. If a developer was looking at coming into town and read this, they'd kind of get our vision and see that we're willing to be flexible. So nothing's kind of locked in. We'd still be zoning and all that. But yeah, I think the whole world kind of changed on this in the last six months, so the more flexibility we have, that helps. And you don't never want to lose track of anything. Other questions? So, hopefully, everybody took time to read through it. Questions for Arista or for staff? Trustee Rush?
I have a couple. So, can you explain again, why bring in office and industrial? So, we're less reliant on retail and entertainment since we don't have a property tax, then office doesn't help our tax base, and also, at this time, so many people are relearning how to work from home. I don't know that we're going to need that much office.
Yeah, I mean, that is the one question we don't really have the answer to, you know, and in my line of work, we've been, since March, dealing with it, what is the impact of this pandemic going to be on things like office? We know that it's got, it's been having some bad impact on retail and obviously on entertainment as well, so, you know, we really, it's just too early to kind of tell where that will be, so it's something we're keeping in mind, but it's really something that we can't predict at this point. The intent of the plan, and I apologize if I gave the wrong impression, is not to de-emphasize or not support retail and entertainment and encourage new retail and entertainment. We have, we've looked at areas that we've designated as commercial. The idea was is to kind of just diversify a little bit to bring up that office-industrial-mixed-use component. What we've seen elsewhere is that you're not really having too much straight office anymore, you're really getting that industrial mixed use, which is why we created that category and kind of put larger chunks of land into that category, so that it's got a range of uses that it can be used for, and there's a lot more flexibility. But it's not meant to de-emphasize. Quite frankly, we really wanted to build up the entertainment category, really pull that out, because you have those regional attractions that are very unique, you've got three of them, I mean. And so continuing to support those, and then additional commercial was added as well, so it's not like we're de-emphasizing.
And then this, this one is probably more a question for David, but a long time ago, we checked on burying the overhead power lines and discovered it was going to be way too expensive, right? And so, why would we have that in here when we already know we can afford it?
It's still an emphasis when we have large-scale development projects. If there's an opportunity to bury the lines, we will do those. The trick is that, you know, once they do get buried, if they ever become in conflict with something else, road widening or something like that, they pop back out of the ground. So, comp ed always replaces them or relocates them with the least-cost alternative, which is always the above ground. So, it's a, we look for opportunities where we can get them, and we'll, you know, get them buried where we can and where it makes the most sense.
And just to say, we use the word encourage in the comp plan, so it's not a requirement when we actually speak of it, it's encouraged that when it's feasible. Understanding those issues that David spoke of are common everywhere, really.
Yeah, I agree with you on the office thing. So, I think everything was tried to be as fungible, flexible as possible, because you really don't know what the next 20 years are going to look like.
It just seems like it was similar to a lot of it.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, well, we know retail's going to shrink their footprint, so we don't want to expand that too much, and the retailers that we have need people in town besides those that live here, so, but again, it's kind of a guiding principle. If a developer was looking at coming into town and read this, they'd kind of get our vision and see that we're willing to be flexible. So, nothing's kind of locked in, we'd still be zoning and all that, but yeah, I think the whole world kind of changed on this in the last six months, so the more flexibility we have, that helps, and you don't never want to lose track of anything. Other questions? I thought Chief had his hand up. I was going to say.
I did, too.
Sure, you'd ask. Trustee O'Brien?
Mine's just a comment, which is really wow. I read every single word, it was fantastic. What I really enjoyed about it was, in the planning process, the two large parcels that are going to be mixed use, that we've already incorporated some idea of community gathering. It's something people continually are asking for, we really don't have it downtown, and you've got two proposed within this plan. That's great.
Thank you.
Trustee O'Garner, trustee Garner.
I would just like to say that, you know, I'm glad that this village has made it a priority to have a comprehensive land use plan, because it really is a roadmap to our future and what we may look like in the years to come. The nice thing about it, you know, it just gives you an overview of where we are and where, and the possibility of where we could go, and I think that's powerful to have something like that. The nice thing about it, it is flexible, it must be flexible, because the world is changing so quickly, but having such a plan, we, you know, allows us to be able to turn on a dime should we have to, and become the thing that we need to become at the time to continue to have such a wonderful community, so kudos to the village for that.
Thank you.
You know, one of the bigger, bigger issues that board it to the far left showing the mixed use, historically, you know, most of the zoning codes had single use, and we've seen so dramatically how there may be changes in land use, and so that, that board to the far left shows that new classification where the village is contemplating that there could be multiple uses, mixed uses in that area, and it's pretty graphic to show the changes in this plan from the past plan.
Trustee Thorstensen?
Yeah, I was just going to echo that. It seems like, I don't know, several years ago, we were all addressed by the, I think it was Illinois Municipal League, and they started the whole mixed use, and then in the direction these days, certainly retail, we don't think is going to be the strong path, and so the mixed use and contemplating, you know, some malls that have turned into half malls, half apartments, you know, it seems like that's the flexible direction that we need to look at.
Okay, there's no other comments or suggested changes, do I have a motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion by trustee Garner?
So, we will bring this back at the next regular meeting with the ordinance.
Oh, that's right, it's under report.
Seems like there's consensus that everyone is happy with the plan, so we'll bring this back on October 5th. And I just want to say, I mean, kudos to Tracy and Arista, so I mean, it's a team effort, David, you know, Ellen, Clara, but Tracy just caught her breath from updating the zoning ordinance, same with Arista, and then we throw the comp plan at her, so she was really the staff lead on those two huge projects that really shape our community and have an impact, a community-wide, so kudos to her and thanks for all her hard work on it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
This will stand us in good stead for the next 20 years. All right, and it's under report, so we don't need a motion. See, I was all ready to vote on it. All right, and that's going to be a hard act to follow, Brian.
Yeah.
All right, so next up, our finance director, Brian Gosnell, is going to give us a COVID-19 financial update number eight.
Included in the material was the, the financial, COVID-19 financial impact memo, number eight. This takes us through August 31st. I do have one slide in here when we talk about sales tax that includes September, since we have that information already, so I included that. Expected duration, not a whole lot has changed here, we're still in phase four, and it looks like we're going to be there for a little while. Again, we talked earlier about, or previously about, the updated regions where we are included with McHenry County. Status of the big three, we did have some changes here. It looks like Six Flags is making an effort to get some sort of Halloween and holiday events moving, that will be helpful. Gurnee Mills is same as they, they've been limited opening with safety protocols, and Great Wolf is the same way with open to the public now, the Navy is fully out of there, from what I understand, has been for a little over a month. Getting into numbers, general fund revenues here, total revenues, at the same point last year, so through, through August last year, almost 15 million. Through August this year, 10.4 million, for a difference of about, of about $4.5 million. We're down 30% in total. Again, through four months. Build that out a little bit, looking at the big four, again, this is sales tax, which has the municipal side and the home row side, amusement tax, hotel and food and beverage. Through four months last year, just over 8.3 million. Through four months this year, almost 4.8 million, again, for a difference of 3.5 million, or down 42.6% through four months. Couple of things here, obviously, sales tax is the biggest dollar variance right now, but one thing that we've, we've been talking about is keeping an eye on amusement tax, particularly when we thought there may be some sort of amusement park opening at some point during the summer, and that just didn't happen. So, that is going to, could in the end, end up being a bigger financial impact than sales tax, depending on where sales tax trends, but particularly when you think about extending past sales from last year into next year, tacking months onto that, that really could go cross over two fiscal years for us and eliminate one, one full year of past sales, This is the chart I was talking about with sales tax, or included September. If we look at through September for last year, almost 7 million, this year 5.3, down 1.7, or about 25%, 24.2%. The good news here is the trend. If you look at the first impacted month of March, when we were closed, so we had shut down for 10 days, we were down 21.5%. That grew to the full month shutdown of April, 41.9. Again, in May, down 33.4%. In June, we're back to 21 point, almost 21.4%. So, the trend is moving. We hit the dip, coming back up the other side, and all of the kind of forecast models I run, I anticipate this flattening out at 15% down at some point for the remainder of the year. I think I had mine still two months out, but, so a little bit more conservative than what we're seeing here, but. Looking at other COVID-related or COVID-impacted revenues, two, little over 2.5 million last year through this timeframe, almost 2.4 this year, so we've really seen this move in a positive direction, down about 185,000 or just over 7% from last year. Couple of things to note here is income tax, we expect this to be down 5% on the year. It was down significantly in the beginning, and then we had, because of the way, there was a delay in payments come in, so it moved it out a little bit more, so that variance has caught up, but we do expect it to be 5% down on the year, so we probably see this carry through. Off-duty police, obviously here, we see this positive variance, we see the impact of the Navy security contracts here, I mean, I think we see that for one more month in September before it ends, we have a billing for that. And then finally, ambulance rescue calls started out very low, but have bounced back and are pretty much right on, right on target with last year. Expenditure side, we started talking a little bit more about this at the last update, through the same time period last year, just over 13.1 million in expenditures. This year, almost 11.5 million. We are 1.7 million to the good, or about 12.6%. That's a little deceiving, because there's some, a timing difference there with payroll, so that comes down to just under a million. However, a lot of the steps we're taking, particularly with open positions, that will compound as the year goes on. If some, if a position opened up in July, this report only has a month and a half of that impact, the rest of the report will have the full impact for, as the months go on, so. Looking at what that means for fund balance, through the first four months last year, we added almost 1.8 million to the fund balance. Through the first four months this year, we have used just over a million, for a net impact year-over-year of about $2.8 million. Again, in what we've kind of projected here, using somewhere between 3 and 5 million of fund balance as we move out, again, you're seeing the biggest impact here through the first four months, we hope. Things will, things will start to bounce back in this lesson, so see this move. Again, everything I look at sees just somewhere in that 25% range of revenues, we think we can get to 10% in expenditures, gets us 3 to 5 million use of fund balance on the year. I'm sorry, 5 to 7, 5 to 7 million in fund balance, 20 and 25%, so 3 to 5 million was the expenditure reduction, I apologize. So, if we have revenue impact of 25%, that gets us 10 million down in revenues. If we can save 10% on the expenditure side, that's 3 to 5 million, I apologize, that gets us to a use of fund balance of 5 to 7 million, or about 25% of fund balance. Basically, if we can hit, end up near that, we will shave 10 years off of our savings. Other funds we've talked about here, water sales, we've actually seen that come back, we were down 25% at one point, that's looking more like 15 now, so we've seen that come back a little bit. And then the same 25% here, impact in the capital fund from the home row sales tax. And then one of the things we've, the staff level, we've started to kind of shift to thinking is, what's the long-term impacts of this? So, we've started to have those discussions kind of at our department informally and at, and at different meetings, so we took a look at kind of threats and opportunities that are going to come out of this. On the threat side, obviously, increased restrictions from where we're at now, extended lockdown, school closures, all that is going to have an impact on village revenue, village finances. The big three, once they open up fully, what is going to be the public response? Has the public expectations changed of mass gatherings, and how is that going to impact moving forward? And then the halo impact of that. And then permanent closures, obviously, there's going to be some subset that may not make it back out of this. What opportunities does that open up as far as, you know, space and all that kind of, all those, all those kind of things, but also the impact on, on what that means to us financially. Opportunities, I think it, we were already in the middle of a forced retail rethink, like this just kind of advanced that, you know, retail, thinking about how they're doing business, curbside pickups, things like that, how does that, does some of that stick after we get fully opening? And again, what has the consumer expectation changed enough that will stick on the other side of this, so to speak? Emerging industries, we've seen some things come about where, looking at like classroom-type settings in retail spaces and things like that, is any of that going to stick coming out, and where's our, are there opportunities there? Reassess revenue vulnerabilities, if you looked at kind of our revenue portfolio before, we were heavily relying on sales tax, but we also had amusement tax, hotel tax, food and beverage tax, so you might say we were fairly well-diversified until you take all the consumers away. So, that definitely, you know, shine a light on one of our vulnerabilities. And then internally, you know, rethinking our operating model about how we had to respond to this and how we could set ourselves up to do that. Again, as we come out of this, the other side of this, looking at filling positions and things like that, and just how we can set ourselves up to be able to react quickly without sacrificing service in the future when that comes about. So, that's kind of the stuff we're starting to, to hit on internally, at least at the staff level. With that, I'll take any questions.
I'm glad to see you all doing that, that's really proactive and got to get ahead of this, how is everything going to look different? So, I'm glad you're having those discussions, and I'm sure you're going to get, it's kind of a prelude to the budget.
Oh, yeah.
It is what it is. Trustee O'Brien?
Just in relation to what the consumers are expecting, with Great Wolf Lodge, how are they embracing the opening, occupancy rate or whatever? Have you heard anything?
I have not heard anything.
What did Nadine say on the phone Friday?
They're often a strong start, and I think this is, there's a lot of business demand, so we'll see how, how it kind of pans out over time. They've been very creative, I don't know, if you all saw the health program that they're offering, where they're offering children in classrooms, kids can be brought up by their parents for a couple, three hours a day, and mom and dad can go, you know, climb the roller coaster, so they're being very creative, and people will write for it, so look, 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 you know.
Yeah, I'm sure they're okay on the weekends, it's during the week, because we don't have anything else open. And then Ellen, Pat, and I had some discussions with Six Flags about a strategy to work on for holiday and stuff, and looping in our legislators and that. And Randy had all positive things to say, even though they have reduced capacity, and our businesses are complying with all the guidance, and, you know, for the most part, I think people feel safe shopping in town. It's just, is it enough, you know, it's not enough to make up for what's not, so. I haven't seen any businesses, and Pat and I were just talking, like, you know, I mean, you're reading in the papers, all, you know, 60% more business bankruptcies over the same time last year and stuff. I haven't seen that so far in town, they may be hanging on by the, you know, just barely with their fingernails, but, you know, I think we're in a super-strong position going in, so we're doing okay. If we'd have just been doing okay in this hit, then that wouldn't have been, you know, we would be feeling it more, you know, and then again, obviously, the chains are probably weathering it better. So, I mean, we have some things going for us, but, you know, as Brian points out, there's a lot of things we got to rethink, you know, as we go into our next budget cycle.
Mayor, if I could just make one more point here before we go. Not only will, that last slide, we'll talk a lot about more of that, the budget, but that might lead into strategic plan next year, too, when we get to that, that part. And then an update on the CARES grant, Lake County has, the US Treasury had changed some guidelines again, allowed for 100% reimbursement of police and fire operations, police, fire, and dispatch operations. If you remember, the county got, I think, 121 million, give or take, from the federal government, allocated initially, I want to say 11 million to municipalities, and then supplemented that with another allocation. So, our total basically is almost a million and a half, it's like 1.445 million that we would be eligible for, that initially, we didn't think we'd even come close to that in face masks and sanitizer, until Treasury changed the guidelines, and so we, with being able to charge, or I guess get reimbursed for 100% on police and fire, we'll hit that, you know, we hit that in two months. So, we have word from the county late last week that our, their initial allocation, which was 980, 985,000, 986,000, something like that, we have been approved for. The county board has to approve the second part of that allocation, to increase it from 11 to, I forget, 18 or something like that, and then they will automatically give us the second half, because we submitted for, you know, obviously, like, 2.5 million dollars worth of reimbursement, so. We don't need to do any more submission, we'll end up with the 1.445 here shortly, but in a couple of different batches. So, good news.
Yeah, that's significant, thank you for being so pragmatic and diligent and tenacious about pursuing every dime right now. All right, that's sobering, but not depressing. All right, so, next up, we have a presentation from Fire Chief Kavanaugh, update on fire station number three.
So, tonight will be the first update for you. It's a quick update, we're just over two weeks from when you approved it, but behind the scenes, a lot has been going on. I want to thank Finance Director Gosnell, he has secured the financing for it. As of Wednesday, everything will be in place, Brian's been working, so, though when you go out to the site, you don't see a structure up there, Brian's really done a lot of work very quickly to make sure all the financing's secure. The second thing we've really been working a lot on is David and his team. They've been going through all the drawings, getting all the permits ready, double-checking, making sure everything meets local ordinance. They seem to mostly be picking on fire ordinances, but I think that's a personal thing, no. His team really has done lots of work going through there, as well as tonight on the agenda, David and the engineer groups looking at the roadway in there, you already- You already approved them to come in and look at the roadway. Pat and everyone keeps working on the intersection, we're still pushing forward with that. I thank you for all your support with that and trying to continue that going. As we shared early on, this will be a year-long project, there's lots of parts to it, a lot of moving parts that we're bringing together, and I appreciate the whole village team getting us there. As far as the site out there itself, so, the construction trailer's out there, it's parked, it's onsite, it's been put up on its blocks, so it's ready to be there for a year. So, we actually have a meeting there tomorrow, our first onsite meeting at 10:00 a.m., we're excited about that, opportunity to meet with them. They've put the silt fencing around, and they've gotten permission, and they've actually started, they stripped the topsoil today. So, if you go out there, you can kind of see what the general footprint of the building with the apparatus being, everything will be out there. So, it was kind of exciting, actually, to see something out there digging and moving. Not that the work in the background by David and Brian hasn't been exciting to watch, but it was kind of neat to be able to see that. The department has, with the help of the engineering department, put a time-lapse camera out there on one of the light poles, similar to the water tower project. We're working with Heather and her team to make sure we're taking the right photos and right locations, and we'll also have a time lapse of the station being built, we're excited about that. So, I'm available for any questions.
All right, and it was really exciting signing the loan documents tonight, obligating the village to pay back all that money. All right, well, this is a big deal for us.
Thank you again.
And again, it's a team effort, I know, so appreciate everybody's putting this front and center as a priority. And we're going to get that traffic light with a fight, it sounds like.
Yep.
Okay, that's all of our reports tonight. No old business?
None.
All right, we're going to move on to new business, and we do have the petitioner on the phone. I'm going to read it into the record. Approval of ordinance 2020-54, granting a special use permit pursuant to the Gurnee zoning ordinance for a second wall sign on property located at 6300 Route 132, Suite C. And again, the petitioner is joining us by phone, so someone has to unmute him.
So, I'll give you a quick summary here. You had a memo from our associate planner, Claire Gable, on this. Sherwin-Williams is located on 62300 Route 132, out in front of the mall, so the same building that Aspen Dental is in, and they're requesting a special use permit to allow this installation of a second wall sign. Sign code currently allows them one sign for the storefront, which is located on the south of the building, facing Grand Avenue, which is the front of their building. They'd like a second sign identical to the one that's on the south side of the building, and place it on the north side of the building, which faces towards Gurnee Mills and the Ring Road. Petitioner stated that the second sign would help those looking for Sherwin-Williams identify the building that it's in. It was before the Planning and Zoning Board on September 2nd. PZB really hit on two items when they discussed this. First was that when the building was constructed, they knew for this suite to have two signs, it would need some sort of architectural change to the wall facing the north, whether it be windows or a public entrance or something to that nature, which they chose not to install when the building was constructed. Secondly, PZB noted that Sherwin-Williams does have presence on a ground sign that's located along the Ring Road between them and Gurnee Mills. So, if you look in your packet that was provided by Claire, really the last page there shows the north side of the building, which faces the Ring Road, and you see the sign that they're proposing there for the backside of their building. Following some discussion at the Planning and Zoning Board level, it received a unfavorable recommendation with five votes against and one vote for the special use permit, and it is before you tonight for consideration. And as the mayor said, Brad Workman with the sign company is on the phone answering any specific questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Pat.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
All right, thank you for attending. Questions from the trustees? Trustee Thorstensen?
Can we make comments, or are you only asking for questions right now?
No, you make comments.
Okay, so, I've always said that I'm supportive of more signage for our businesses. It's a very heavy-traveled area, and with the speed limits and everything else going on, you don't want them to have to start driving endlessly through the parking lots to try and find a business. So, I've always been supportive of that. Reading through the notes, I understand that they were never given that, or they were told upfront they weren't going to have a second sign, but that wasn't that business there, right? It wasn't, they weren't involved at the time?
Right, it was the developer of the property, not the specific tenant.
Right, so, I understand the reason for their decision, but again, once again, I would support having it there. I'm actually a fan of that paint, so it'll be nice to know that I wouldn't think of driving past there to go to Home Depot, all of our other options, Menards, or any other town to look for that when we could find that it's right there.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from the trustees? Trustee Hood?
I agree with Karen. I do like signage in general. However, my competing balance on that is when the Plan Commission comes up with a five-to-one decision, I lean towards wanting to support their decision. So, in this case, I'd probably consider that more strongly than I would the actual request, since I know that they've spent some time and considered it. I'd want to honor the time they've spent, and it doesn't seem to be something that I need to absolutely overturn for business purposes, for the village benefit. So, I would support the Plan Commission's decision.
Mayor? Trustee Ross?
I also agree with that, that I would support the Plan Commission, plus, they have the ground sign there, so it's not like they don't have a way of knowing where that building is, even though they don't see it from on the building, they have the ground sign right behind it. And in front of it.
Trustee Garner?
My question would be, what kind of precedent are we setting for the future? Should we grant a sign to Sherwin-Williams? For the next business that says, hey, I want a sign on the back of mine?
It is a petition for special use, so you would consider that, you know, based on the facts of each case. So, certainly, the village wants to act consistently, and that's a consideration. But in terms of a written precedent, it's a little different, but again, certainly the village wants to act consistently when they receive these requests.
I have a question for the petitioner. I know you are the sign company representing Sherwin-Williams. Are we positive that, did you convey to the Sherwin-Williams management that they would be entitled to the signs on the back if they did just the minimal amount of windows?
I did, I did, and I talked to the Treasury, and they have thought that as well, and Sherwin-Williams finds that there was not much room for that. Now, the back part of that store, if you mentioned that parking lot, the Ring Road would be a warehouse type environment, would have like the, you know, storage rack, front or the wall, you know, if they were to put out the window, not much impact on the floor state, obviously, but you'd probably avoid that upon the electrical service panels and other, like the kind that would belong on that wall, that we might standing from there to come out.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure it was on the record. Because this is a special request, if the board supports the Planning and Zoning Commission, then this request can't be brought forward correctly for another year?
Well, just as a point of order, so, the petitioner has asked for the special use, so we always state the motion in the affirmative, as if, you know, to respect their request. And so, once there's a motion made, if you, because it's in the affirmative, if you want to support the recommendation by the Plan Commission, you would vote no, and if it doesn't receive enough affirmative votes, then it fails, so...
And if it fails, does that stop it from being brought back again for a certain length of time?
Well, typically, you know, we ask, we could ask, depending if it's identical request or, you know, or if it's changed in some way, we would have to assess that at that time. There are sometimes, you know, some minimum time periods, but it'd have to be virtually identical.
Okay, all right.
Now, the fact that the provisions do provide, if they put opaque windows or fake windows, there may be some other relief that they could obtain even without a special use, and all those rights are still provided to the property owner and petitioner. It's a very narrow request that you have in front of you tonight, is with the building configuration unchanged, would the board be inclined to give this a special use?
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Trustee O'Brien?
So, if the petitioner were to put in a window just to comply with our regulations, he could then put in the sign which Trustee Thorstensen thinks looks good, and I would tend to agree, but I also would agree with the Planning Commission saying that the rules are the rules, and they knew that going into it. The problem is, if they just put any old window back there, and if they block it off, it would look uglier, and they would have right to put that sign in, wouldn't they? If they just put any window, they could put their sign up, and we might have an uglier facade in the back than what we currently do. To Trustee Garner's point...
David, I don't under, I had never seen this word before that you used to describe the gla, what is spandrel glass?
It's an opaque glass.
Okay.
It still has the glossy finish to it, so you'd still get the reflection like a window, but it would be like a black backing on the glass.
All right, and they could do something that's in perspective with the building size, but it's not really a window to disrupt. Yeah, I mean, it's...
To Trustee Garner's point, it's true also, because after I went and looked at the property tonight, I then was over by Home Depot, and all those businesses across the Ring Road from Home Depot are in the same configuration. They have signs on the Grand Avenue sign, but none on the parking lot side, and I could see it opening up more requests.
Yeah, I mean, generally speaking, you know, the code is developed, so the main signage would be in the main entry area, you know, because that's, you know, that is the point, that the customer is coming into the store. I think it's already been noted that the Plan Commission, it may have, I think, an important discussion point was the fact that they still have some signage on the Ring Road. And then actually, in your package, you can see they have two monument placements on signs, both in the front and in the rear, and, you know, certainly, if there was no signage, you know, that would be more factual basis for the board to consider. And then it's trying to relate the requirements to every particular circumstance, and circumstances will change, you know, depending on the vantage point on the Ring Road.
Trustee Ross?
Well, the other thing, if we follow the rules tonight, and we say you have to stick with this, and they try it for a year, and then they have people coming in and saying, I couldn't find you, then that would be a reason to go back and put up the other window. But as far as I'm concerned, they should be able to find them with three signs already, and it would be just one of those things that if they then figured out that it didn't work, then they could come back again.
Well, I think it's fair to say, if we didn't have windows on signs, every side of every box would have signs. I mean, it's, and... And not being disrespectful, I mean, of those businesses, the more signage they have, you know, there's more opportunity that someone could spot that from even more remote locations. So, it is very much a balancing test, and it is one that, as we pointed out, that's why we had the public hearing, and now the recommendation for the board to consider.
Okay, so, Trustee Garner?
Can David or Tracy, can you shed some light on the significance of a window with a sign? I mean, how do the two meet? I mean...
There's a couple standards to be able to achieve. Tracy, you want to take this one, as I'll let you go.
Well, the whole basis behind the sign ordinance is for attractive signs and attractive buildings, so the idea is to reward somebody for putting up a more attractive building with windows. If you look at the building where My Pizza is at, you have windows both on the north and the south side of that building, so they have signage on both the north and the south sides. If you look at the buildings that are further to the west where Gurney Town Center is at, it's basically a solid brick wall facing Grand Avenue, which is not attractive. So, the whole impetus behind the sign ordinance was to promote more attractive buildings.
Great, that makes sense. No, that helps.
All right, so, I'm going to ask for a motion on granting a special use permit for a second wall sign for the Sherwin-Williams location. Do I have a motion?
It's almost.
Motion by Trustee Balmas?
Second.
Second by Trustee Thorstensen. Roll call, please. Balmas?
Nay.
Hood?
No.
Thorstensen?
Yes.
Ross?
Nay.
Garner?
Nay.
O'Brien?
No.
Two A's and four nays.
Not just one.
No.
I think it's actually, one I and four, excuse me, five nays.
So, we have the nays, the nays were five.
Just starts with the only guest, though.
O'Brien, you want to guess?
No.
Okay. All right, so, the motion does not pass. All right, I'm sorry, Brad. Go back to Sherwin-Williams and let them know that we're sticking with our sign code, and there are some alternatives if they want to discuss them with David and Tracy.
Yeah, I will, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
All right, next item of business is approval of ordinance 2020-55, adding one Class IV liquor license and one Class 13 liquor license by amending Section 6-56 of Article 2 of Chapter 6 of the Gurnee Municipal Code entitled Alcoholic Beverages. This is for Benny's Beverage Depot at 6911 Grand Avenue, Suite G1.
Sure, so Benny's is, has taken over the former Art Van Furniture site on Grand Avenue. The company's been around since 1948, currently about 40 locations in Illinois. They're requesting a Class IV, which allows for the sale of alcohol and liquor only for consumption off-premise, resold, and then a Class 13, which allows Class II and IV licenses to conduct beer and wine tasting events subject to certain provisions in the Gurnee Municipal Code. Police Department took a look at all the necessary paperwork, found nothing to preclude issuing the license. They're hoping to be open by late October, early November, so this is kind of the final step in the process here, is the liquor license before you tonight for consideration.
Any questions?
Can you just clarify, beer and wine tastings, that's inside versus outside? Can you just clarify, beer and wine tastings, that's inside versus outside? Okay.
Do you have a motion to approve?
It's moved.
Motion by Trustee Balmis. I think Trustee Ross is the second. Roll call, please. Balmis?
Aye.
Hood?
Yes.
Thorstensen?
Yes.
Ross?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
All ayes. All right, motion carries. Closer to getting them in town. All right, and last but not least, is our discussion of 2020 trick-or-treating that continues to be the most emails generated of any topic over 20 years of doing this. Trick-or-treat takes the top post again. So Jack did a great job, you know, getting the message out on social media and in our newsletter, asking for feedback. We had the emails sent to the village board address, so you could see them directly. There's also quite a few on social media, which Jack has compiled. I know they also compiled what all the other communities are doing. Jack had a great idea with our newsletter going out, it was kind of something we could do to help the residents. And then we had guidance from the CDC. The state has not put out their guidance yet, so no matter what we do tonight, it could get superseded by the state. But it's, you know, we have parents asking, they want to know, you know, if they should be buying costumes and what they should be planning. And we have some people that already made their decisions clear to us. So I know it is considered a high-risk activity, but I think there's ways that it can be mitigated with the signs and with outdoors and wearing masks and stuff. But this is really on you guys tonight to discuss and decide. So who wants to kick it off?
I will.
Trustee O'Brien? Okay, no, Trustee Balmis, seniority.
I am all for having trick-or-treat on Halloween. The recommended times, two to five, are fine by me, and I like the use of the signs or sending out the sign in the keeping posted. I think that helps for those who do not want to participate. They have the option of posting it or putting a yard sign. I just think it's something that the community needs, certainly the kids need. I already have a great nephew who has his Mario costume and is so excited that I just cannot, cannot even fathom not having Halloween available to them. And it's like some of the neighborhoods already indicated that whether we vote one way or the other, they're planning on having it anyway. I think there's safety options for them, like doing the outdoor, separate bags, that for those who want to participate can do. So I think there's plenty of safety precautions. Most kids are already masked. I see no reason why we can't do it, and especially since this year, I can actually vote for it. It's on a Saturday and it's on actual Halloween.
That's what I said to Pat. I said, the real tragedy here is it's actually on Halloween, the way Jeannie likes it, and then we're debating whether to even have it or not.
So I'm actually all for it, and I would be disowned by family members among with friends that if I voted against it, they'd assassinate me. So I am definitely for it.
We definitely don't want that. All right, Trustee Thorstensen?
Well, to be a little different, just so that I'm not echoing everything, first of all, on the page one where it says Gurnee discourages trick-or-treat, I'm just a little put off by the word discourage. I don't know, I can't think of right away a softer word, but, and my thinking initially was, I mean, I work on COVID for my company. I can't, we can't afford to have this be a big issue. But then I read all the comments coming in, and what it really comes down to is it's an outside activity. COVID, that's the one thing that we can do, right? An outside activity. So I'm certainly supportive now because it is an outside activity. I think there is in our bullets on page two where we talk about our guidelines. I don't know, again, if we have any need to wordsmith this, but the second to the last one says, do not trick-or-treat in groups with others, trick-or-treat as a household. It almost feels like we're throwing that out there when we know they're going to be trick-or-treating with their friends.
A lot of this is guidelines from the CDC and that we've seen other communities put out there, so I mean, again...
Yeah, I just, I saw earlier something about a parent, one of the bullets talks about the parents, oh, just going through the candy as usual. So, I mean, we really need to put this back at the parent oversight still. So I don't know if there's a parent oversight aspect that can be worded into here somewhere, but that's where we're not mandating as a government whether our children can do this activity outside as a...
These are guidelines.
Yep, so just want to share that.
I know, reading the comment, the emails, it's like, we can't get people to follow the speed limit, but somehow they think we kind of forced, you know, the whole trick-or-treating, like, that's the thing that...
Only in your neighborhood.
Yeah, I know, I'm like, gosh. They'll follow us on trick-or-treating, but they won't follow us on anything else. So anyways, it's just been ironic.
Well, one of the advantages too is, well, Keegan, I mean, the other communities are all doing it for a change on the same, for us, we're all finally on the same date as all the other communities, so there shouldn't be that terrible influx that we have because we put it whatever way before everybody else.
And a lot of that's driven by their, you know, they go to school together even though they don't live in the same town together, but that's not anything we can control with the public roads. Heather Ridge can, but like, a lot of neighborhoods. But yes, everybody will be doing it at the same, same day, not same time. Trustee O'Brien?
I just wanted to add to the guidelines, maybe we could put the porch light idea. Porch light on if you're interested, porch light off if you're not, it just gives another visual. And I'd looked at the signs for the other municipalities. I like ours, I don't know who designed it, but it's nice.
Those are all Jack and Catherine.
There we go.
Trustee Ross?
I'm okay.
Okay.
Do we have to say yea or nay? Can we simply say, you know, it's at parental discretion and, and, you know, put out the safety guidelines and suggest that parents be responsible in this? Again, it is an outside activity, people are outside anyway, you know, and they're going to do it anyhow, so do we have to say, we're not having trick-or-treating in Gurnee?
Well, generally, we vote each year on the day and the hours.
Correct.
So that's really kind of...
Setting the hours helps the community.
Yeah, so that's kind of what we're, what we are looking for concurrence on, if nobody wanted to do it, then we wouldn't vote on the day and the hours, basically. And then that'd be kind of a free-for-all, I guess. I don't know, it's just, it's a very odd situation.
But, I mean, it's, it's...
Yeah, we don't want to tell, you're right, though.
It's three hours, it's, do we have to say no trick-or-treating or yes trick-or-treating? Just put it in...
The board insists by the board that if people are going to go out and trick-or-treat on this day between these hours, that's good enough for staff, because then we can push that out, because that's what the community is asking.
Sure.
If there's going to be trick-or-treating, what's the hours in one day? So that's the information I need that Jack can push out.
Yeah, we can't rest them if they go at a different time.
Maybe instead of saying discourage, say we are not encouraging it.
Yeah, the bill doesn't recommend, or we'll find a different word besides discourage.
Got an opinion, Tom, on trick-or-treating?
I think enforcement was the, I'd rather just lay it out there, give them the hours and the time, and it's like everything else, I think, that the government needs, from my perspective, needs to be small and let the people make their choices unless they're going to hurt somebody around them. And then the city needs to step in and help out. In this case, it's like the people clearly have an option to stay inside or not participate, so provide the tracks for them to follow and stand back.
Yeah, we really need to emphasize, it is not mandatory that you hand out candy and it's not mandatory that you go door to door. This is, if you're going to do anything, these are the hours, period.
Well, they have that option all the time anyway, so it's not, not anything new.
I know, but somehow, I don't, it'd be nice to have that kind of power. All right, so we're, Trustee Thorstensen?
Just one last question. I know Susie Curavilla from the Park District was on the FLC program talking about their haunted path, or what, however they call it, I don't remember.
Trunk-or-treat.
Have haunted trick-or-treat path or something? Are we able to make any statement about that, or are they so limited by their attendance that they really don't even want us to talk about it?
I think they were doing, you had to register for the event, and it was over at Hunt Club, and it was going to, it wasn't going to be a huge deal.
So they don't, it wouldn't be good, practical for us to, I know, because like Libertyville said, they're having theirs on Main Street.
Yeah, and the CDC came out and said trunk-or-treat is high risk.
Not sure why.
And we talked about that previously, so, yeah.
Yeah, that would probably be just logistical nightmare if we told every family they had to come through the Hunt Club park.
Well, I just meaning, is it something that we are willing to add as our partnership with the Park District?
Oh, we'll publicize it.
We can push it out, yeah, we'll share it, yeah.
Yeah, we'll share it, but it is by registration only.
Yeah.
All right, so staff has what they need?
What I need, we will get the sign in the keeping posted that goes out, we'll tweak the guidelines a little bit and get those out and let people know for 31st through to 5, and it's up to them whether they go on or not, turn the porch light on or not, or use the signage map.
Okay. And I will open the floor to the public. The public has anything to say? Dane?
We're going to thank him for the loan, right?
Yes, thank you for the loan.
That's our public comment to Dane. Thank you, Dane.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
Motion by Trustee Balmis, second by Trustee Thorstensen. Oh, no.
Sure.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Right, Greg, good night.